Good evening, everyone. It's 6 o'clock. I know Commissioner Lyons is not here, but he is in the closed session and is getting some information from Abby on another item on our agenda, so I omitted it was okay for us to start with him not here just for the roll call, and he's there at closed session now. Maida, will you confirm that we're in compliance with our open meetings laws?
Yes, we are.
Thank you. Can you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Nordine?
Here.
Commissioner Johnson?
Here.
Commissioner Zur?
Here.
Commissioner Bika?
Here.
Commissioner Clements?
Here.
Commissioner Harder?
Here.
And Commissioner Lyons is not present at the moment.
Thank you. Our first order of business tonight is a closed session under Wisconsin State Statute Section 19.851E. We will be discussing the CPI increase. I would like a motion to adjourn to closed session, please.
So moved.
Moved by Johnson, seconded by Harder. All in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. We are adjourned to closed session. We will re-adjourn here in open session at approximately 7:00 PM. Hello, everyone. The Board has just adjourned its closed session. I've given the Board an additional two minutes to take a break, grab something to drink, or whatever they need. We will start the open session of the meeting at 7:05. Thank you. Okay. I will once again call the meeting to order. The Board has acted on the CPI increase for the year and will communicate that action to the parties that need to know about it as we go forward. At this time, if you are willing and able, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight, we do not have any members of the public signed up for public comments, and so we will move directly into our Board and administrative reports. We'll start, as always, with our superintendent, Superintendent Johnson.
Good evening, Commissioner Nordine, Board members, student representatives, and executive team members. Over the last few days, it's been incredibly busy across the district, even without the inclusion of the decision from our special board meeting on Wednesday. We're preparing for next year on a variety of fronts, including staffing, and budgeting, and allocating resources to address this past year's impact of COVID and what it means for us beyond the school year. Teams of principals at the specific levels are focused on this impact, and it appears in each of their agenda items when they meet for their weekly teams calls. Since our last board meeting almost two weeks ago, we experienced our third professional development opportunity on equity for administrators in our system leaders group. I truly appreciate the detail and opportunity for growth as a system, and look forward every Wednesday per month as we're able to spend with our facilitators from UW-Oakley. This will begin to impact our system at the staff level very soon, as I already noticed some of these tenets and activities lead to discussions in our teams' staff meetings at the school level. This is precisely the impact and systemic change we need to serve our students and families better. Last week, I knew spring was approaching, as the elementary schools I visit have a different feel at recess time. The students I see sledding are no longer on snow-covered surfaces. They tend to start on snow and then shift to some dirt and sometimes a little bit of the parking lot as our temperatures get warmer and the days get sunnier. It does not seem like our elementary students mind. After our decision to add K-5 students to in-person learning for four days a week starting April 5th, there had been immense amount of planning with a couple weeks to prepare and implement before spring break. We appreciate the work of the elementary principals group who met and formed smaller committees to ensure the implementation is as smooth as possible for such a change to our system. I respect and value the work of our directors and executive directors to lead, follow, as well as support at this time, too. There's an attitude of input and decision-making at every level, district level, school level, and teacher-team level that will benefit all stakeholders involved. I'd urge all elementary parents to submit your choice of cohort as soon as possible before those deadlines you received on Wednesday evening or Thursday afternoon last week, with reminders over the past couple days, too, so that we may ensure a smooth transition for your students. There's been that focus on numbers of students in attendance for in-person learning, the class sizes, the ability of teacher teams to provide input and develop systems and schedules individual to their schools and students. We've had a few teachers reach out to their principals and administrators to develop solutions to slightly puzzling staffing items, not just defining and pointing out the problem, but solving those situations. Finally, I'm very appreciative of the time and effort of Dr. Kaiying Zhang and Kim Kohler in sharing the communication around vaccination. When the city-county health department had connected with us to inform us of a change in prioritization with our staff order of vaccination, Kaiying and Kim immediately sought the information from K-Mark's HR department to reorganize and invite all eligible employees to schedule their appointments for today, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Saturday at Prevea, Oakleaf, and the mass vaccination sites. They've been working constantly since Thursday with the health department to organize those staff members per the county health department priorities and notify them of those appointments. Kaiying and Kim have updated us through the weekend on our district progress. Staff members and priority lists have been notified with extremely low confusion, and that's so positive. Thank you so much for your commitment.
Thank you. The President's report tonight, I have only a short update to share with you on our governance policy writing. Last Thursday, Commissioners Clements, Zur, and I finished our initial draft of the results policy section. Governance culture will likely be completed by Commissioner Clements, Dr. Johnson, and myself this Thursday. And then next Friday, this Friday is coming Friday, Commissioners Harder, Lyons, and I will be meeting to start the drafting of the annual work calendar. We'll be using the draft language as it stands to guide this, and so if there are changes that we end up making beforehand, obviously, we will alter those in the calendar. I want to encourage all of my colleagues on the Board to review the drafts and submit comments to me in preparation for our special work session March 29th at 7:00 PM, in which we will discuss any issues outstanding for those policy drafts in preparation to consider them for adoption in April. At our next regular board meeting on March 15th, we will once again welcome Jan Berg and Steve Tempest from Forest to our regular work session. The topic of the discussion will be meeting structure in the new governance model, so if you have questions, please feel free to send them on to me so that I can send them on to Jan and Steve and help them prepare. Thank you. Next, we'll go to our student representatives' reports. We'll start with our representative from Memorial High School, Emery Tool.
Neither of us have much to report on tonight. Both the schools are progressing pretty normally. Students are kind of wishing for spring break at this point, but not much else to report on.
Thank you. And now we'll go to our representative from North, Zoe Wolf.
I also don't have much to report on. I know the junior class is very stressed for the ACTs next week, so that's had an effect on everyone, but other than that, not much going on.
Thank you. We'll now move on, then, to our school board committee reports. We'll start with budget development. Commissioner Harder.
Good evening. Budget development has not met since our last full board meeting, but we will be meeting again soon.
Thank you. Demographic trends and facilities planning, Kim Kohler.
Good evening. The demographics, facilities, and facility planning committee met about a week and a half ago. We heard an overview of the Applied Populations Laboratory study. We're going to dig a little bit more into that data at our next meeting and hope to share it with the Board shortly.
Thank you. Leap, Jim Schmidt.
We have not met since the last regular board meeting, but we meet a week from tomorrow.
Thank you. And I was not able to attend Policy and Governance the Thursday after our last board meeting due to some personal issues, so I've asked Commissioner Clements to give the report tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Nordine. Policy and Governance met on February 18th with a full agenda. We reviewed and updated policies utilizing the term handicap to ensure contemporary and consistent use of terms throughout our policy manuals. We also went through Policy 536, Professional Staff Resignation, to update process and timelines to be consistent with our annual HR calendar cycles. We reviewed Rule 511, Employee Discrimination Complaint Procedures, Policy 423, Participation on Public School Students in District Courses, and Policy 424, Public School Open Enrollment. That was a mouthful, relating to students who are not in our ECASD enrollment and how they may take courses if they're in our geography. And finally, we reviewed updates to Policy 441.2, Student Representations at School Board Meetings, to potentially include virtual school and McKinley representation in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our legislative update. Dr. Johnson.
Governor Evers signed on January 20 the Special Session Senate Bill 1 into law on February 25th as 2021 Wisconsin Act 4. This new law would, among other things, provide businesses, schools, and governments with liability protection with COVID-related lawsuits. The U.S. Department of Education sent a letter to the chief state school officers inviting states to request a waiver for the 2021 school year of the accountability and school identification requirements in the Elementary and Secretary of Education Act. A state receiving this waiver would not be required to implement and report the results of its accountability system, including calculating progress toward long-term goals and measurements of interim progress or indicators, or to annually meaningfully differentiate among its public schools using data from the 2020-2021 school year. The letter also addresses assessments and makes it clear that waivers from federal assessment requirements will not be issued by the Secretary of Education. The Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction is seeking additional Wisconsin residents to take part in its initiative to collect information on internet connection speed to improve access around the state. Test your speed using MLabs Speed Test, which takes less than 30 seconds. The speed testing project will continue through March 31st, 2021. The Department of Public Instruction recently released a new public dashboard of Wisconsin internet speeds by school districts. The dashboard shows speed test data for school districts over a specific time range. On February 16th, the state senate approved Senate Bill 55 on a bipartisan vote. The bill modernized the publication of minute proceeding held by school boards and other governmental bodies. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move to our consent agenda. The Board considers approval of the consent agenda with one vote and without discussion. If any Board member wishes to discuss an item, it will be pulled from the consent agenda and voted on separately. Tonight's consent agenda includes minutes of February 15th, 2021, minutes of closed session, February 15th, 2021, minutes of special meeting, February 24th, 2021, human resources employment report, Oakley virtual school expansion, transition program. Commissioner Lyons.
President Nordine, I would request that we pull Item 8.7 from the consent agenda.
Okay. So then I would hear a motion to approve the consent agenda consisting of Items 8.2 through 8.6.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Any abstentions? We'll now take up Item 8.7, the Transition Program. Commissioner Lyons, I'll recognize you first to explain the issue.
I absolutely support this program. I just, within the presentation that we are approving, I do want it noted, just in the meeting record, that the construction costs that are associated with the renovation should be in compliance with Board policy on competitive bidding.
So, Abby, I know you've been asked about this already. Is there anything that you can add to us so that we can help to understand better what this looks like before we make a decision?
Sure. Thanks, Tim, for the opportunity. As we dug a little bit deeper into Board Policy 672, it does look like we should put it out for bid competitively, so I know that when we talked about it, there was a construction incentive with having Goldridge Group do it, and we had done a little bit more research. And so I agree with Commissioner Lyons' recommendation that we should put it out to competitively bid, allow the opportunity for other contractors to, the opportunity to do that work for us.
Thank you, Abby. So what I'd like to do here is I'd like to first get a motion to approve the Transition Program, and then Commissioner Lyons, I would ask you to make a motion to amend the motion to include competitive bidding for the remodel, and then we'll take that emotion and we'll apply it. So I'd first like to hear a clean motion to approve the Transition Program.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Harder, seconded by Zur. Is there a discussion on the motion? Commissioner Lyons.
I'd like to amend the motion to include that construction costs that are associated with the transition school renovation should be in alignment with Board policy on purchasing and bidding.
Is there a second for the amendment?
Seconded.
Any discussion on the amendment? The amendment to require that we follow policy for competitive bidding? Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, so following policy after that, though, the assumption is just to ensure that putting it out to bid comes lower than that 5% discount that was provided by the company that's leasing, is that correct?
No, the putting it out to bid allows for others to take a look at what the work that's needed to be done to renovate the space, and so if we're putting it out to bid, I don't know what that would look like from Goldridge. So Goldridge had offered us the estimated construction cost of $225,000 with an allowance for the cabinets if we were to do them to ourselves for $25,000, but there was a $50,000 incentive if we signed a 10-year lease on those construction costs, so that would bring the construction costs, again, I'm just going to include the cabinet allowance, to $175,000. So what we would do is we'd put out, we'd say, here's what we want the space to look like, give us your price, and then we would evaluate those and then award a winner to do the construction work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Lyons, I see you're unmuted. Do you have additional comments on this amendment?
No, I do not. I forgot to mute myself. Thank you.
That's fine. I'll take this opportunity to call the question on the amendments. So the motion is to amend to include following Board policy on competitive bidding. Maida, please call roll.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
The item is amended. We now return to the motion on the floor to approve the amended Transition Program proposal. Is there any discussion on that motion? Commissioner Clements?
I was unmuting in preparation of voting.
Well, we'll call that a call to question, and Maida, if you would once again call the roll to approve the Transition Program as amended.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
All right. So obviously, the motion passes, and we will now move to our individually considered resolutions. We have one item tonight, the adoption of the ECASD equity statement. I'm very excited to bring this forward for approval tonight. We had discussion about it one month ago, and at that time, there were a few edits that were offered as potential considerations, and I believe those edits have been incorporated. Dr. Johnson, do you want to confirm that? It looked like it was, as I reread the document in preparation.
I did address those comments. I appreciate the assistance of Maida with helping me recover the meeting minutes to be able to make the adequate changes, but I did do that.
All right. So at this point, I will open the floor to Board members for comments or questions, and of course, eventually, a motion. Commissioner Clements?
I'd like to thank everyone on the Board who has participated in drafting this statement, especially Commissioner Johnson, who really took the lead in creating what I think is a really succinct and really powerful statement by the district and the Board. You know, it is largely symbolic, but I think it helps to set the tone for the district, both internally and externally, making it very clear what values we aspire to achieve, knowing that it will be tremendously difficult and messy work in getting there. And so I'm really happy that we're taking this position. We've been working on policy supportive of this for the whole year, and I know that the previous Boards have been working in a similar direction as well, and I'm really looking forward to rolling up our sleeves and working on this really urgent vision and value that we all share.
I know the district has begun significant moves and, you know, to build on work that's already been done in past years, but some really significant moves in the last year or so in this direction, and my understanding is the staff requested such a statement and such a policy to be clarified, and I'm really glad that we're able to do that. I think it's a really well-placed, well-worded statement as well.
I'll take a moment to extend my thanks, and maybe I'm stepping on some of the work that Dr. Johnson has already done, but to the groups of the public that have been involved in this process, and Dr. Johnson, of course, my thanks to you for taking that out and making sure that it was seen by the public, by historically marginalized groups, by people of color, and by organizations and communities, to make sure that we have the input from a wide variety of people to really strengthen this statement and have it say what we want it to mean, and know that this can be, while it is, you know, a symbol to start with, that it's going to be a focal point and a direction setting for not only this work, but ongoing work, governance from the Board, from the administration, and throughout the teaching staff. So I'm very thankful that the public stepped up to help with this and lent their input. We can't do these things without you, and especially, you know, we look across this Board as a group of largely white and privileged individuals, it's easy for us to have those blind spots, and so coming together and lending everyone's voice to this process is so important, and I'm very excited to lend my support to adopting this tonight. And without additional unmutes, I will ask for a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Seconded.
And I would like to do this as a roll call as well.
Commissioner Nordine?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Zur?
Yes.
Commissioner Bika?
Yes.
Commissioner Clements?
Yes.
Commissioner Harder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lyons?
Yes.
Thank you, everyone. We look forward to continuing the work that we've been doing and stepping forward boldly with this work and really making a difference, impacting systemic racism of our system and the lives of every one of our students. I appreciate all of the work that you did. We'll now adjourn to our committee reports for the evening. We have two items tonight, the first of which is the annual SRO policy report. For that, I'll turn the floor to Kim Kohler.
Good evening. I'm going to start this presentation, and I'm hoping that you see a large PowerPoint slide right now, is that correct?
We do, Kim. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Good evening. Deputy Chief Derek Thomas from the Oakley Police Department and I are pleased to be here tonight to share an annual review of our school resource officer policy. Policy 445 outlines our partnership with the Oakley Police Department and our school resource officers. This policy outlines three items within the policy that are to be reviewed annually. We review the SRO and student contact data. We review the policy and the memorandum of understanding. Deputy Chief Thomas and I would like to share information from that review with you tonight. Policy 445 emphasizes that five school resource officers in the district were established to provide positive supports for students and families, and aid students with positive behavioral interventions and supports, provide access to adults who mentor and guide them, and through an emphasis on counseling and supports rather than arrest or exclusion. This policy will be before Policy and Governance later this week, and at that time, I'll share research information from Wisconsin districts regarding school resource officers. Tonight, we'd like to talk a little bit about the purpose of school resource officers in the Oakley Area School District, as well as share with you some data. And Deputy Chief Thomas would like to share a little bit about the partnerships that school resource officers provide.
Thank you, Kim. Again, I'm Derek Thomas. I'm deputy chief of police. I oversee the Investigations and Professional Standards Division, the division in which the five SROs are within. And before I get into a little bit of what the SROs do within the school district, I think it's also important to recognize the application process that we have for our police officers here at the city of Oakley. We vet our officers out. It's a very long, strenuous application process before they're able to put on a police uniform, and then before even thinking about whether or not they want to become a school resource officer. A couple of things that we look for in our police officers, as well as in our school resource officers, are, you know, problem-solving skills, communication skills, character and competence, high moral values, ethics, team players, ability to form positive relationships with the community and with school staff, and work alongside the community through neighborhood associations, things like that. Throughout the course of the process, like I said, it's a very strenuous process. It's about six to eight months long. They first start with a written exam, physical agility. They go through the police and fire commission interviews. If they pass all those, then they move on to the chief staff interviews. We have a selection of however many people that we have available within our police department. We do background investigations, and I think it's important to note that our background investigations on our officers are very tiresome, they're very thorough, less than 50% of our applicants make it through our background investigations, because we want to make sure that we have the right caliber police officer as part of our organization to serve this community. Once they complete it and they finally get the offer, they got to pass a physical and psychological and medical evaluation, as well as a polygraph exam, to ensure that all the information that they provided to us is accurate and trustworthy, competent, and people with high character values. Eventually, they go through a 14-week training program and a year probationary period. So these are the officers that we hire to be part of this police organization, and these are the same type of officers that have been vetted out. And these are the same type of officers that have been vetted out to be part of the school resource officers if selected for that. Um, the application process for the school resource officer is typically a tenured police officer, a police officer that's been on the department for, um, five to 10 years. They've likely have been hand-selected by former school resource officers or police supervisors within our police department who think that they would be a good fit based on their communication skills with kids and their past work history. Um, the interview process is consistent with the policies that has been set forth, uh, upon the board. And the selection process for these individuals is a collaborative effort between the administration and our police department, uh, to ensure that we have the right person that is going to be for that particular school. Our SROs, when they do become SROs, they go through a very, uh, comprehensive training. Uh, this training, uh, when they're SROs for about five years, um, like I said, is very comprehensive. They have continuous training. Um, I can certainly, uh, write off some of the trains that they go through, but if you, if you request, I can certainly provide you all the different trainings that the SROs go through, um, to ensure that they are, uh, having the best practice for the school district. Some of these trains are ethics in the SRO, um, SRO as an informal counselor and mentor, adverse childhood experiences, trauma-informed care, adolescent and mental health training, fair and impartial policing, human trafficking in schools, autism awareness for first responders, suicide prevention from youth, vulnerability in homeless youth, understanding the implicit and explicit bias, crisis prevention, crisis intervention and de-escalation, adolescent and behavioral health conditions, drug-endangered children, educating youth and the dangers of the internet, multiculturalism training, crisis intervention and training, and the list goes on. Uh, like I said, I can certainly provide a, a more comprehensive, formalized list of the trains that the SROs go through, um, if you wish. Uh, the role of the SRO, uh, is, is, um, some things are very difficult to measure. Um, they build meaningful, positive relationships, um, with the students and the administrative staff, um, with the parents, um, and with, they typically respond to information and evidence of school threats, drug use, child malt treatment, physical safety of students, fights, harassments, and other forms of conflict. They serve as mentors, most likely, mostly, and role models, partners with the Department of Human Services for children that are in need. Uh, they facilitate learning academies such as the Junior Police Academy, which we had a very, um, large success rate with. We've served over 250 families through the Junior Police Academy, which is a great opportunity for the officers that are not part of the SROs to get, um, familiar with the student body and the student body to get familiar with the SROs. Uh, they work collaboratively with the administration, serve, uh, uh, service of support role. And I think it's important to note that they are not part of the disciplinary process within the school district. They do not patrol the hallways, they do not look for infractions. They're first responders to the critical incidents and first aid care, uh, prior to EMS arrival. And they provide education and safety through presentations. There's countless numbers of presentations that the SROs do, school safety and security presentations, cybersecurity and interacting with strangers, criminal law, drug and alcohol presentations, fire drills and intruder drills. And I do believe that the presence of the SROs within schools do make the school safer. Uh, they do have these positive interactions with students. They've been working collaboratively with the school district for many years. Uh, I believe our first, uh, school resource officer came in 1980. We, um, had two resource officers in 1985. And from that point forward, we moved to five school resource officers and had a lot, a lot of positive feedback, um, from the resource officers there in the school. I'm, I'm confident to say that our school resource officers are professional communicators. They've been hand-selected, they've proven, uh, a very good work history working out there in the community. And I've also seen the familiarity of these school resource officers after they get out of the schools and they go back on patrol in the streets and the positive interactions that they've had with students. I personally witnessed, uh, many, um, kids that have grown older come up to the school resource officer and tell them how much of a positive impact would they have had on them throughout the course of their life.
Thank you. Each March, data from the school years presented to the board. In March of 2020, data and trends from the 2019-20 school year were shared. Principals and resource officers began to examine the data that was disaggregated by the school and identify areas of focus the following year. And then, like many things, COVID impacted our plans. Um, in this case, however, COVID has provided, uh, opportunities. Fewer students in our schools provided the opportunity for stronger relationships with our school resource officers and the school community as, um, as well. Um, and there has been increased engagement, um, face-to-face with our officers this school year. Um, I'll begin with a review of the data so far during the 2021 school year. Uh, this year in the district, we have five school resource officers who had 243 contacts with students, staff, and families. And just for sake of comparison, last year at this time, our SROs had approximately 1,350 contacts, um, with students. We have examined this year's contacts and would like to share with you who initiated the contact, why students, um, were con, and SROs contacted one another, which students tended to have contact with our SROs, and what happened, um, once that contact was made. So before we begin looking at the SRO data, I'd like to pause here to talk about Policy 444. It states that both the district and the Eau Claire Police Department are committed to anti-racism. And our SROs will serve with due regard for racial, cultural, or other differences. In order to measure our work toward this goal, the data that you'll see tonight is disaggregated by race and ethnicity, um, throughout the presentation. So this graph does show the race and ethnicity of students, um, in our secondary schools. You can see here, um, that, this is actually for our whole district, I'm sorry. You can see here that approximately, um, 75% of our students are white, uh, 10.3% are Asian, 6.2% are Hispanic or Latinx, 5.12 or more races, and 2.6% are black. Um, before we dive into the demographic data, um, there are a few important things to note. Um, first, each data point represents a contact. Um, for example, if, if I met with an SRO one time, I would receive one data point. If I talked with an SRO 10 times, I would receive 10 data points. So the data that we're sharing might not reflect necessarily the number of students that had contact, but instead the number of contacts, um, that the SRO made. Um, second, McKinley data is reported in the overall data, but there's such a small number of students at McKinley, um, it would be really easy to identify the students if we reported it out in a disaggregated manner. So for that reason, we did not break out McKinley data on its own. Um, in, in some schools, the cell size of some of the subgroups, um, will be really small as well. So again, to protect the identity of students, we may not report all, out on all subgroups. Um, and then third, it's important to know that the race and ethnicities reported by the DPI don't match entirely with those, uh, reported by the district. So for example, we report Alaskan native, but the DPI does not. Um, they report Pacific Isle and we do not. So although subgroups don't align 100%, we believe the data will still be, um, valuable to, for you to look at. So this graph shows which students, um, were connecting with our school resource officers this year. Um, you can see that 57% of all contacts with school resource officers were male students and 43% were female. Um, on the right-hand side, you can see that 72% of all contacts were students, um, were with students that were white, 10% with students that were Asian, 9% with students that were two or more races, 5% with students that are black, 3% of contacts were with students who were Latinx or Hispanic, and 1% with Alaskan native. These graphs show the race and ethnicity of students at our high schools. I, I want to remind you that we need to be careful with the data and the cell size of certain groups. Um, for example, at North High School, on the right-hand side, um, you will see that, um, three students are, um, Pacific Isle or identify as Pacific Isle. So if we reported the data that indicated why an SRO had contact with somebody who was, um, Pacific Isle or what happened in that contact, it'd be very easy for others to possibly identify who that student might be. Um, so because of that, um, and in an effort to maintain confidentiality and trust, cell sizes that are lower than 20, um, will not be reported out in a disaggregated manner in this report. These graphs show the distribution of contacts at Memorial on the left and North on the right. Um, one of the things that we look for is to see if the percent of contacts are relatively close to the population at each school. At the same time, remember that if I have several contacts with an SRO, I'm represented in the data several times. Um, so looking at this data, you might notice that white students make up 63.9% of contacts at Memorial. Um, students who are Hispanic or Latinx make up 19.7% of those contacts. Two or more races make up 8.2, Asian 4.9, and those who are black make up 3.3% of SRO contacts. At North, students who are white account for 77.8% of the contacts. Of the remaining contacts, 8.6 are Hispanic or Latinx, 6.2, um, are two, two races or more. And, uh, students who are Asian or black each make up 3.7% of the contacts. Um, for comparison's sake, I'm going to go back to the previous slide so you can see the shape of the graphs. Again, this is North, this, the one on the right is North, the one on the left is Memorial. So just to look at the shapes and the shading of those. Go forward. All right, again, you will see here the, uh, demographic makeup of our three middle schools. Um, so again, look at the shapes of these graphs, um, and the shading of those graphs. I'll give you a moment to look at those as I move forward to the next slide. You'll see what, um, school resource, um, officer contacts looked like in those schools. At each of the three middle schools, the majority of contacts were made with students who were white. Um, at Along, the remaining 26 contacts were with students who were, um, black or two or more races. At North Star, uh, 20% of the contacts were with students who were two or more races or Latinx. And at South Middle School, um, and there's more of a distribution among several races and ethnicities within the remaining, um, contacts that they had. So as we start to dig deeper into the data, the first data point that we collect is who initiates the contact, um, the school resource officer contact within the school. Overwhelmingly, you can see here that the majority of contacts are initiated by students and school staff. In fact, 49% of the contacts with school resource officers were initiated by school staff and 30% were initiated by students. In contrast, 4% of them were initiated by law enforcement. It's also helpful to consider why students and school resource officers connect. The contacts can be categorized as a proactive contact, student welfare, um, criminal investigation, um, in ordinance violation or other. Um, two important things that, um, you do not, to note here are, um, the impact of COVID on the interactions this year. Um, you can see that 28% of our contacts this year were related to, to child welfare, um, student welfare. During the 2019-20 school year, just to compare, 12% of our SRO contacts were related to student welfare. Um, second, our goal is that 50% of contacts with school resource officers are proactive in nature. Um, so this graph, you can see that 23% of the contacts were, um, categorized as proactive. But many of those student welfare contacts are also, um, they have a proactive bend to them. Um, for example, um, in those contacts, uh, school resource, um, officers documented cases about, um, social, social media usage, um, students that were reported as runaways, um, or what are the laws, um, against, um, some of the things that they do in their neighborhood. And here we take, uh, uh, the district-wide data and we break it out by gender on the left and race and ethnicity on the right. So these are the same contacts that, um, we saw, the same reasons for the contacts, but we break them out by gender, um, and race and ethnicity. So because 70, or I'm sorry, 57% of the contacts were with males, we would expect the bars, um, um, for male versus female, we would expect the bars for the males to be higher because overall they had more contacts, um, with the SROs than the females did. Um, and then if you look at the graph on the right with the, um, purpose by race or ethnicity, you can look for trends about, um, races that, um, might have more proactive contacts or more student welfare checks versus those that may have more criminal investigations or ordinance violations. And then these graphs, um, break down that same data by level. Um, again, it's important that we respect the privacy of students. So you'll notice that, as I mentioned previously, there are some, um, groups that we won't report out for in this graph just due to the small cell sizes. Um, on the left, you can see data around why middle school students connected with our SROs, um, by race and then, and ethnicity. And then on the right, you can see that same data for high school. And then after each contact with families, um, students and staff, our SROs document the disposition or the result of that conversation. So you can see here that SRO contacts can lead to an arrest or, or a referral, and that did happen 43 times this year. Um, it's important to recognize, though, that 83% of the time, uh, our SROs facilitated counseling or education about the law. They mentored students, they initiated referrals for wraparound support from community agencies or recommended school-based consequences. Um, our SROs do understand adolescents. They understand child development and, uh, support students in the mission of the district, um, in their interactions. Again, this data tells part of the story here. Um, we'd like to disaggregate the data, uh, by demographic and by school. And so I'd like to share that with you now. So if we dig into that a little bit more, these graphs illustrate, um, that those dispositions by gender on the left. And on the right, you can see that same information broken down by middle school and high school. So, um, male MS is male middle school, female MS is female middle school, and then the same thing for high school. So district-wide on the left and by level on the right. And then here you'll see the dis, distribution of disposition, um, by race and ethnicity, um, at our middle school and high school levels. So middle school on the left, um, and high school on the right. One way to analyze these graphs is to, again, look for the representation of a race or an ethnicity across multiple dispositions. For example, um, were students of two or more races represented in law and counsel, mentoring, and juvenile referral? Um, another way to analyze it is to look at the size of the, um, color in each bar in relation to the proportion of students in that demographic group. Um, for example, um, the majority of our contacts were with students who were white. So it makes sense that the bars for our white students are higher than for the other groups. Um, I want to stress here that we, we recognize the importance of this data. Um, and more importantly, we recognize the work that needs to come after the data. Again, um, this year I will share this data, um, with each school and principals and school resource officers will examine the school-level data. Um, and then they'll develop action plans that are specific, um, to their school. My hope is that next year at this time, I'd be able to share those action plans with you as well as the impact that those plans have on our data. And so now we'll transition into the second requirement within the policy, and that is to review the policy annually. This policy, um, like I said before, is scheduled to be reviewed at Policy and Governance, um, later this week. And at that time, I, I do plan to share the, the research that And at that time, I do plan to share the research that I referenced earlier, but I'd also like to share two recommendations for Policy and Governance around this policy. The first recommendation is for P and G to clearly delineate the role of the school resource officer so that ECASD staff and administrators are able to distinguish between disciplinary conduct, which is handled by school administrators, and staff, and illegal conduct, which would be handled by law enforcement in the school. Certainly, we value the role that SROs play in our school, but we also recognize that the vast majority of student behavior in our schools can and should be the responsibilities of our teachers, our counselors, and our administrators. So having those clearly delineated roles, we feel would be helpful for all of our stakeholders. The second recommendation that we would propose is to make, within the policy, clear guidelines regarding the data that the board would like to be collected and how it would like for that data to be reported. So as an example, if I simply take the 243 contacts that we had this year and then multiply it by the number of factors within each of those contacts, the gender of students, the race and ethnicity of students, who initiated the contact, what was the outcome, what was the contact about, there are actually over 300,000 data points for a very slow year in the SRO world. So Deputy Chief Thomas and I really want to make sure that the data that we share is helpful to you. We've collected the data outlined that you see in this policy, but we know that you have additional questions, and we know you've had those questions in the past. So if this section of the policy were revisited and we could clearly identify what it is that the board is asking with the data analysis, we think that that would be very helpful for you as we examine trends moving forward. And then finally, Policy 445 requires that the memorandum of understanding is reviewed annually. The current MOU is in place from January 17th to July, or I'm sorry, June 30th, 2022. It does outline that five, the five schools that you see listed here, DeLong, North Star, South, Memorial, and North, have SROs, although they do serve all of the schools in our district. The MOU also indicates the pay structure for those school resource officers. We don't have recommendations for changing the MOU at this time. However, as the policy is reviewed, it might impact future MOUs. Deputy Chief Thomas, would you like to speak?
Sure, thank you, Kim. The partnerships that we've had with the Oakley Area School District have been invaluable for us and I believe the school district. The multiple SROs that we've had throughout the course of the years have shown to have a profound positive impact, meaningful relationships that they've had with the student body as well as the administrative staff. And I mentioned it before, that, you know, our SROs, they do not patrol the hallways. They do not purposely go out and look for infractions. They're merely a resource for the student body. They assist the administrative staff, they support the administrative staff, they develop positive relationships with kids that have a go-to person within the school that's easy access, that they're familiar to, that the officer has good familiarity of their behaviors and be able to act accordingly. That's both beneficial for the school district and the police department. And they are mentors to these kids, if like it or not. Some of these kids are having problems at home, and most of those problems filter into the schools. So to have that familiarity with the students and to be able to talk to that student and have that positive relationship with the administrative staff as well as the parents is very helpful. There have been critical incidents that happen outside of school that do involve students. The partnership that Kim and I, we've worked together for a few years now on some critical incidents that has happened to the students, and we've always been consistently on the same page to where the families are notified first of the incident before the general population is notified of the incident and what's the ultimate outcome. So to have that go-to person that's readily available for the administrative staff that they can trust, that they've handpicked, is critical, especially when we're dealing with some of the instances that have happened within inside the school walls and outside the school walls. The SROs, they don't deal with some of the minor infractions that kids might do outside of school. The bigger ones, obviously the more critical ones, they do get involved in it. They do work alongside the administrative staff as well. Over the years, like I said, you know, I talked a little bit about the police, Junior Police Academy. That's been a very positive thing. We've been receiving inquiries from families already whether or not they can have their children sign up for the Junior Police Academy. Like I said, we've served over 250 families so far. We've been recognized alongside the school district in collaboration of a 2009 National Recognition Award for Safety Programs from the School Safety Advocacy Council. And in 2011, the school district as well as the police department received a national recognition for anti-bullying awareness campaign. So these partnerships have been going on for a long time, but they've been shown to be valuable. As I said, the familiarity with our officers and the students, not just when they're in school, but when they're outside of school and then when they grow into adults and positive interaction contacts.
And I will piggyback that, especially from a communications standpoint. The partnership with the Oakley Police Department is very valuable when we have incidents, whether in school or in the community. For example, I do know that, you know, in the midst of a crisis, during the crisis and after the crisis, we will have a coordinated response with the information that we share, and we'll have streamlined communication. Also, having an SRO available, for example, you know, when something happens at school, it is a resource that we do rely on. Most importantly, though, I think the proactive stance that school resource officers take in the relationship building with students that we value the most, which is why we always strive for at least 50% of the contacts to be proactive. So I'll review. There are three annual requirements outlined within Policy 445. You can see the recommendations for those requirements here. After reviewing the policy, we are recommending that the incidents for school and school resource officer investigations are clearly defined, and the data collection process is also reviewed. Number two, although there are no revisions to the MOU at this point in time, if the policy is updated or when the policy is updated, we would recommend a review of that MOU and potential changes to that. And then finally, we shared data with you tonight, and based on that review, we're recommending some action steps. One, share the data with principals and school resource officers. We believe it would be helpful for principals to see not only the district-wide data, but the disaggregated data for their schools. And number two, that the principal and SROs each develop a plan to address any needs or gaps that they see within their data so that they can set a goal and positively impact that data. And then number three, that those results be shared with the board at the annual meeting next year at this time. And so we would like to open it up to questions and discussions at this time.
Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Deputy Chief Thomas, for bringing this information to us today. I will open the floor now to comments and questions from board members. Dr. Johnson?
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. I think in light of recent events, SRO roles in education have been examined not only in our state but across the country. And I have a load of questions, but I also will be bringing some of those to P and G as it relates to Policy 455. But to kind of start the discussion, just as a board member, I request if you could provide, Mr. Thomas, if you could provide that documentation of the training, the specific training for the five SROs, I would appreciate that report. Could you just give me a quick breakdown of just the, what's the demographics of our five SROs as it relates to gender and/or race? And then could you speak to these training, these documented training, what's the alignment of those trainings to requirements that have been outlined by that National Association of School Resource Officers, NASRO, I think the acronym is? And where are we in terms of our alignment of some of their quote-unquote best practices recommendations that came out in 2018? And I guess I'll stop there, and then I'll come back. But if you could have just addressed those pieces, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. I'll start with the first one. In the back end, you were breaking up a little bit, so I might have to ask you to repeat the request. But yeah, our five SROs, in speaking in terms of demographics, we do have, they're all five white males. They're five white males right now. I do know that we have a younger generation of quality police officers that are being arrested and becoming SROs that can break up those demographics a little bit more to better serve the student body. I have had supervisors that have had discussion with those and do know that there is interest in those transitions when they're available. They are young at this time and certainly are more than capable to be successful in that position. As far as the training is concerned, the training that these SROs have gotten, they're nationally recognized training. They do go to a SRO basic conference that's 40 hours long that cover a wide range of topics that are beneficial for the SROs to better serve the student body, to better understand trauma-informed care, mental health, crisis awareness for the kids, and obviously, you know, their role as an SRO, working with the administrative staff as a support role and not a disciplinary role, rather they are involved in only criminal investigations. Their primary responsibility is to be a lead mentor, a person to trust, you know, the familiar face that ultimately turns into a person to trust, that they can come to as a third-party person within the building. And I'm sorry, the back end of the question's broken up a little bit?
Yeah, just the alignment with that, the 2018 NASRO best practices document. And so have the training for those SROs, have you aligned in communication with the school district with those best practices? Because in that document, they made it a point of realizing that the kind of the quote-unquote political climate and our school environment climate between SROs, community, especially communities of color. I'm just curious, ask you, where does the determination come in terms of the updated of expectations of training? So my hopes are that it's just not a one-time thing to be selected and then goes through training, but then no other trainings take place. And so could you just speak to that aspect of it? Thank you.
As far as the 2018 training of national, I must admit, I'm new in my position. I've only been here a year, so I'll need to follow up on that for you, sir. And I will follow up, and I'll make sure that, you know, our SROs are highly trained and equipped with the best with national standards. We just don't stop with and think that we're just doing fine right now. We're always going to continue to build upon best practices and look for what's best practices, nationally recognized training for our school resource officers. So we just simply just don't settle. But as far as the national is concerned, I'm sorry, I can't answer that question right now because I'm not familiar with it. I will familiarize myself with it, and I'll have those answers.
So Dr. Johnson, I know you said that you had more questions. I will come back around to you once we've given our other members a chance. Dr. Vika?
Hi, thank you. I also want to thank you for the report. I find I am, this year probably more than ever, really struck by the choice of data to present. So to make the point that the SRO is really not part of the disciplinary process, but so many of the data points circle back around to discipline in one form or another, and then a claim that the SROs have a profound positive impact, the relationships, the role models, the mentors. But we've not really talked about those data. Where are those data? What shows the significant impact that the SROs have on students' lives? We would need student data, family data, even officer data to be able to demonstrate this claim. And so like I said, I'm so struck by, I don't know if we're asking the wrong questions, we're collecting the wrong data, but there isn't evidence for the claims to me.
Can I respond to that a little bit, Commissioner Vika? Would that be okay?
Of course.
All right. So I'm going to pull back here. This is directly from policy. So you can see that this is the piece where I do think it would be helpful for us to outline what data do we want collected. So this is the current data A through D that the policy asks us to collect. So I anticipate, anticipated tonight, that there would be questions around the data and what is collected or what it is showing or what it's not showing, which is one of the reasons why I think as we review this policy, I think one of the things we need to consider is what data are we asking for and what data can we report out to you? So the school resource officers do, every time they have contact with a student, collect one through four. I know Deputy Chief Thomas asked them this year to also include what was the, you know, who asked for the contact or who set that contact in motion? So that would probably be an E on this policy. But I think that you and I are probably on the same page there as far as what data are we collecting and is it giving us the information that we're seeking? So that would be one of the reasons for this recommendation here for Policy and Governance.
Commissioner Zer?
Kim, could you? How many school counselors and/or social workers and/or psychologists do we employ at these five locations that are also SROs?
I'm wondering if Kaiying can unmute and answer that question?
Hello, yes, I can. So at the secondary level, at the middle schools, we have one and a half at North Star, 2.3 at South, and 3.0 at DeLong Middle School. We only have three social workers at the elementary schools at this time. So that's a 3.0 FTE at the elementary schools.
And I think she also mentioned school psychs. Kaiying, do you know?
Yep, so schools, yep, school psychs are under Michelle Racky, and so I might have an idea, but Michelle would know the exact numbers. Sorry.
I believe that, unless Jim, you can correct me, I believe each high school has a full-time school psych, and I don't know what the, I don't know what the middle schools have.
They should. If I can get the data in a moment, I will get back to you as soon as I can.
Thanks.
My apologies, I don't think we mentioned the high school counselors. There are five at each of our two high schools, for 10 total.
We've confirmed 12 psychs. We just have to figure out how they're divided, be right with you.
A halftime at North Star, and I don't know about DeLong, oh, point-eight at South and point-nine at DeLong. Thanks to Michelle Radke and Tim Scooley for that data.
So, Kim, in that, in that vein of questioning, I guess, my curiosity is, is how many, you know, I wonder if there's a way for us to look at data points, and I mean, this is something that can be discussed in policy and governance. I'm just thinking out loud here, is how could we cross-reference the data for the contacts with the SROS with the contacts with the school psych and counselors and social workers? And I'm wondering if the same students are utilizing both services, one or the other, and for what type of, what type of encounter? Because I think it speaks to, you know, social workers and psychologists and counselors are trained for those, they're trained to be those resources for kids for many, 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 many years. And I have no doubt that the police officers that are serving our students are doing everything in their power to become the best versions of SROS that they could possibly be, but they're not social workers or psychologists or counselors. And they're being asked to play that role in a significant form for our students, and I would be interested to see if our students are somehow or another more comfortable, or they're being referred. That's the other thing, is are they being referred for one reason or another, someplace within the school, either by a parent or staff member? So I would love to see that data at some point.
Can you just clarify that being referred question? Are you asking if they're being referred to school resource officers, counselors, or both?
Well, that's, I'm wondering, when the decision is made to go to an SRO, is, you know, that, that, that point of, are they being referred also to a counselor? Are they being given the choice? You know what I mean? Is there some sort of reason why students or staff or parents would be choosing a referral to an SRO as opposed to a psychologist or social worker?
Thank you.
A question for our SRO team. Given everything that's been going on this year and increased attention to law enforcement in general, what kind of messaging or, I guess, thoughts are going on from your city side of your role in terms of how to make sure officers are in positions that are, that put the community at best position, rather than putting either residents or officers in positions where, for lack of a better term, bad things happen?
You're speaking on term of prevention?
Prevention, training, the culture of the department that can assist developers, or assist officers to develop in ways that are, I guess, emotionally intelligent, culturally intelligent, to whatever situations that I'm sure are very difficult that you often encounter in your work. And so we've been speaking a lot about the district side, but we know that you work in a city law enforcement ecosystem, and so I'm interested to hear more about that side in terms of what, what training and, and other changes have been happening over the past year or so in relation to increased attention and scrutiny of our law enforcement professionals.
Thank you for the question. I think it's important to note that we just didn't begin this, this training within the last year. This has been ongoing training that we've had for the police department. It's been on the forefront. We're always searching for nationally-recognized training for best practices in policing. This isn't just something that we decided to change within this last year because of the circumstances that we've been faced. Our officers are all being trained in crisis intervention training. We developed a crisis intervention team that's going to train all of our officers in crisis intervention training, more, close to fifty percent of our officers at this time has been trained in our one-week-long crisis intervention training. Our team is going to be nationally-recognized as a crisis intervention team for the training that they plan on putting out for our officers. So it's a, it's a goal that we have within the next few years to ensure that all of our officers become trained in crisis intervention training. We do have fair and impartial policing. We've been doing that for years. We develop partnerships with neighborhood associations where we have officers that continuously go and speak at different neighborhood associations, talking about the current trends within particular neighborhoods and familiarizing themselves within the neighborhoods that they police. We want people to know within our community who their officers are, are within that neighborhood. And I think it's important to note that we are, we work alongside the community, we're partners with the community. We don't, our warriors, our officers are not warriors, they're problem solvers, communicators, they're people with high character and ethical values. Like I talked about a little bit earlier on in the presentation about the hiring practices that we have. Now, this all begins to ensure that we have a good, fundamentally sound police organization, and we hire the best people that we can possibly hire. We go through a very strenuous hiring process that takes anywhere from six to eight months. Within that six to eight months, these officers are vetted to ensure that they are of high moral character before they are even offered a position within our police department. So the training that we have them go through, we, this last year has been difficult, I think, as everybody knows with COVID. Training has been virtual. We've been resulting to virtual training because obviously with COVID, kind of getting in the way, our officers aren't able to venture outside the city and go to trains that they typically have gone within the last several years. But we do have them do virtual training, so we're not stopping our training now because of COVID. We continue on educating our officers of the best practices to ensure that they engage with the community fairly in the best ways possible.
I would just like to say from a student perspective that I don't think that positive, the positive impact of officers can be put into data, if that makes sense. Like, for example, the previous officer at North, Chaz, he would talk to, in the hallway, you would always see him talking to students, and rarely would I see negative interactions, and I was there for two of the years that he worked there. And I just don't think that can be put into data of how students feel about the officers. Yes, you could get surveys, but does that really reflect truly what it's like? And thinking back to elementary school, when officers would come in and talk about, you know, stranger safety and crossing the road, things like that, I just think interactions, especially at a young age, that it's good for kids to just be, to just meet police officers, because they probably won't get the chance to otherwise unless they were put into a bad situation. But I just think it's really good to at least have the outreach and the opportunity for students to reach out, or to meet officers and talk to them without thinking that it's always such a negative thing. So I would just like to say that I like that officers are there. I think it's comforting, and although I have never had a bad experience with an officer, I think a lot of students feel like that as well.
I think Zoe's point about data is a good one. I've personally, as a board member, wrestled with similar questions around a lot of our whole-child initiatives in the district, and how do you measure, how do you measure things that seem almost unmeasurable? And we talk about maybe counting interactions and things and surveying and things like that, but none of them seem to be quite up to the task. But it is, I think it's a really important question, especially as we look at coherent governance as a model for this board, the data becomes particularly important, and what role do these anecdotes play versus what role does a hard data play? Kim, when you talk about the matrix of data, and I think it was maybe three hundred thousand data points. Yeah, I appreciate, I think this is the slide up here, that there, I think the guidance from, from staff is going to be really important from our executive team on how to make sense of this data and how to move forward with getting, there are clearly, there's clearly work to be done, but how, how do we measure in such a way that helps us track the progress of that work, define the work, and make progress on it?
Thank you. I mean, ultimately, we do want to provide the data that you're seeking and the information that you would like, so, you know, as we ponder that, I suppose that policy and governance, there's, you know, probably a few layers of questions related to that that we might need to consider.
Dr. Vika, I see that you are unmuted, and I presume it is in direct response to this, so I will, if that's the case, I'm happy to recognize you again, otherwise we'll continue to wait.
It is, but I don't want to speak ahead of somebody else who hasn't spoken yet, if anyone's interested.
Sure. Commissioner Lyons, do you have anything to say? Otherwise, I do have plenty for myself, and then Dr. Vika will come in to you, just like Dr. Johnson. Go ahead, Commissioner.
By all means, Tim. Go ahead.
Thank you. For me, you know, Kim, I'm sure you'll remember last year when you came and gave this, and I was not particularly impressed by the data in the sense of how minority, students, minorities were overrepresented. I even went back at one point, looked at the minutes, and saw Dr. Vika was also noted as having some comments there. And I'm not particularly happy with what I'm seeing this year as well. And I think, I'm glad that the data is provided by school, because just as schools are a leading indicator for increasing diversity of our community, so are the secondary schools behind the elementary schools in terms of their diversity, right? As our community grows more diverse, the children pop up. So at first, when I looked at the data, for example, district-wide for Latinx students, it shows three percent. Hey, they're actually underrepresented in terms of the overall district population, but when you dive into, and you'll have to forgive me, this is going to get, a lot of numbers are about to come out of my mouth. And I also want to recognize that we're also working with relatively small populations here, so we don't necessarily have, and as you said, Kim, you know, if one person has ten interactions, they're ten times there, and of course, that makes a bigger difference when it's one out of, say, the twenty-five listed black students at DeLong than it does for the seven-hundred-and-thirty-five white students at Long. So I recognize that we are talking about things that are able to skew some of this data. But when I dig into our Latinx population, if I looked at just the percentage of contacts at Memorial, nineteen-point-seven compared to seven percent Hispanic and Latinx students. At North, eight-point-six percent compared to four percent of actual population. At DeLong, none, so at least none reported. Six-point-seven percent at North Star compared to five-point-six percent of actual population, and eleven percent, eleven-point-one to be exact percent at South compared to eight-point-four percent population. And as I look across our five schools where this data is reported, blacks, Latinx, and students identifying as two or more races are overrepresented in the contacts with SROS at Memorial, at North. Blacks and two or more students are overrepresented at Long. Latinx students are slightly overrepresented at North Star, as are, and two or more racist students, and at South, all three of those groups are overrepresented. And I went on to look at, and so I did a bunch of number crunching this afternoon, because I wanted to look not only at what's happening now, but also what happened last year, because last year when we talked about this, what was, there's a lot of baseline data. This is the first year we're disaggregating, and this is, of course, what we want is to disaggregate, but we didn't see that, you know, what's the two-step over time. So the first question I asked was, how does this compare to white students? So what are my, what's my contact? And so I did some, some, just, well, I mean, it was on the spreadsheet, but it was quick math, right? Latinx students at Memorial are three-point-five, four times more likely to be, have a contact with an SRO than their white peers. Blacks are one-point-six-six times, and two or more races, two-point-six-five. Right? We're going to see similar, there's similar numbers. Long blacks are four-point-seven-six times more likely to have contact with an SRO than their white peers. Now, this is the case, there's twenty-five students there. So one student that had a really bad year, or a really great year, and was just always down there talking with that, like as Zoe mentioned, there's, there are, I'm sure, relationships being built, and that can skew it, right? At South, blacks, two-point-four-six times more likely than their white peers. Hispanics, one-point-four, two or more races, one-point-seven-five. I can send a little color-coded picture that I have sitting in front of me, so I don't miss any of that. But I also thought, well, last year was baseline data, we weren't happy about it then. If we see a broad, you know, trending back to everybody having basically their own representation, you know, one-to-one, so if I'm three-point-three percent of the population, I'm three-point-three percent of contact, but there's not that either. And so I compared that look. Now, so at Memorial, blacks are less likely this year compared to last year to have contact with SRO. So that trend is getting closer to the representative, but Hispanics are more likely this year, and so are people of two or more races. At North, those three groups are trending back towards the mean. I'm not including Asian groups here, because Asians, if anything, are underrepresented compared to their populations, and so, but we could look at those as well. At DeLong, two out of those three are coming back in the direction towards, but, you know, blacks, black contact is up. At North Star, Latinx is up, where two or more races are down, blacks are not reported at North Star because there are, there's a very low black population there. And at South, it's up for blacks and Latinx students and slightly down. So we, there are plenty of points where it's, we're moved, at least for this one-year trend, we've moved closer to representative contact, but there's also plenty of points where we're moving away from it. And that's a real problem to me, because if we can't say that we're moving closer to our goal, then we're not, what are we doing? What is our goal? And you might be able to say, well, we're having positive contacts, and so many of these contacts with these students are positive ones. We're shooting for fifty percent proactive contacts, or, you know, whatever our goals are. But I would ask, why do black and Latinx students, why do students of two or more races need more positive contacts than their white peers? Why are they overrepresented in positive contexts if you want to call them positive even? So this is a real issue for me, and I don't know what to make of it. This is a two-year item, but when we're, when we just tonight signed this equity agreement and we're overrepresenting the same sort of trends that we see in policing nationwide, and keep your mind, I think that there are a lot of positives that might come out of this, but when we're overrepresenting our students of color, there's some, there's racism going on, and that's not acceptable. And so I'm not certain what the, what the measure is. I know some districts in the, in the state have removed their SROS entirely, and I think there's a reasonable question to be asked about how many of these SRO functions are better handled, as Commissioner Zer said, by professionals who are trained entirely in this. There, you know, the mentoring that can happen, is it better handled by a social worker, by a psychologist, by a counselor? I was very disappointed to hear my son refer, and this is anecdotal, to hear my son tell me, I can't go to my counselor, they're only there for scheduling, and he's at Memorial. So why, why can't he go if he's, you know, he recently lost his grandfather? If he's feeling down, he feels he can't go to the counselor at Memorial, but isn't that the person? But isn't that the person, isn't that one of the people that should be able to take care of that? And if we're handing that off to police and we're overrepresenting our populations of color in those handoffs, I have a lot of concerns. And I'm not sure how to, you know, we'll, we'll take this up in P and G, but these numbers are problematic and they're not overall better from last year. So I don't think we've taken that step. So the trainings are great, but if they're not producing results that show us that we're contacting these students, and again, with the caveat, but these are small populations and they can be skewed by, you know, a few students who have a lot of contact. I don't have a direct question, but I'm really troubled for the second year in a row by these, Dr. Johnson. And then Commissioner Zer, you'll be up next.
Yeah, could, could you speak to, I, you know, I'll finish up with my remaining questions and I'll leave the rest up for Thursday and P and G. But could you, I, for me, what I'm a little bit troubled by is that, you know, one of the outcomes is like school-based discipline. The idea, school-based discipline should not actually be part of an SRO report because it actually should be part of the educator and administrative report. And so, but I also wanted to, do we have data, do we know if those, those students, some of these students, regardless of race, also would be categorized as students with IEP plans and/or behavior management plans as well? And so I'm, I'm just curious if we could instantly get information there. And then I look back in the, I look back at the policy 455 and I guess I'm trying to find some operational definitions. Could you operationally define proactive? And like, is it proactive for whom? Like, what does it, like, what does pro, proactive mean? How is that operationalized by our SROs? And then that last piece that I, I thought was a little bit interesting, on the bottom of our policy 455, we have this school legal resource manual as, as an attachment. And I guess it's supposed, it's supposed to support our, our policy. However, there's a lot of things that have actually changed since 2016, especially in terms of best practices. And I would actually argue, especially as it relates to our SRO interview process that's in there, does not actually align with the school legal resource manual process that's, that's put there. So I, I think we have to do, but could you just, are students with disabilities, are we able to get any of that information as part of it or no? And that's kind of what I'm, and like I said, I think for me, moving forward in terms of that progress that Dr. Nardine was speaking to, I think really that, that school-based discipline piece, I would just argue, I'm not even sure that should even be a part of an outcome that's actually being reported from, from an SRO. Because if we say that, what we're actually saying then is SROs play a specific role in classroom management issues within the school. And so when you, that recommendation that you have on there, I think this one has to really be, be spelled out in terms of, because what that would also do in terms of providing us some level of progress, we would hope then, and actually that, that slide that was presented to us about the percentages of who's making this contact, that we see a decreased percentage in both the teacher, and I was a little bit shocked about the administrator piece. You know, it's that, you know, administrators of each building, if administrators with, at each building are not the best in terms of proactive measures of behavior management, then we actually have to examine actually our training for actually those building leaders. And so, you know, what, I guess the only question if you want to ask now, and like I said, I'll, I'll have these ready to go on Thursday, but could you just speak to that student with disability piece? And are we able to actually have some of that data included? Thank you.
We can look at, we would be able to dig into Skyward and find out whether a student does or does not have either an IEP or a 504 plan. We do not have that, I do not have that data now. So it would take, you know, some, some time to go in and check that. As far as the school-based discipline, that is one of the reasons for the recommendation that you see here. Like, we need to clearly delineate those roles and, and understand when, when is it school-based and when should an SRO be involved? So that is the exact reason for this recommendation here. I also heard you ask what proactive means. And Derek, I wonder if you wanted to talk about that at all?
Yeah, the, the certain column that I had added to the data collection from the school resource officers this year is how the actual student has been contacted. The reason is to why were they contacted? Were they contacted because a student? Were they contacted because a teacher? Were they contacted because of administrator, a parent? And we found out that a vast majority of their contacts are not based on the proactive efforts of the school resource officer. The proactive piece, as I'm looking through some of this data that has been presented to me from the school resource officers, was if, for example, an unruly student may be in, in the lunch line where a teacher tries to intervene and the incident becomes rising to the level to where the presence of a police officer might help de-escalate that situation, but not result in an arrest or a citation, because those are always the last resort for our officers. The last resort that they want to do is implement intermediate sanctions on a student. The first thing they want to do is to, like I said, help collaborate with the administrative staff if needed to help with the administrative staff and have them referred to certain outside entities to get them the proper need and care that they, or proper care that they need. So the proactive efforts are with the officers seeing that a situation is perhaps rising to the level to where their presence can help de-escalate the situation because of being the presence of a police officer.
Commissioner Zer?
Yeah. So I, I also have a few pages in a notebook, same where I did number crunching of the, of the same magnitude today. And one of my questions was going to be about long-term data collection. Just as a new board member, I don't, I, I didn't have the presentation last year. And I think that going forward, it would be helpful to make sure that we can see progress over time. And especially any areas of improvement and any areas where there has been any improvement. I, I too am left with a lot of questions specifically related to this delineation of roles. And I, I'm going to propose a question, and whether it's a reasonable one or not, I don't know. But what our, what, what are our social workers and counselors and psychologists doing with their time if they are not available to actually be resources for our kids in school? Is, is there something that they are doing as part of their job description that we need to, to think about? Because this, this comes back to a question to me of, you have a teacher or administrator who gets himself in a situation with a student where they need some support. And they're, they think of the people that they have at their disposal, and SRO is the one that they send that student to, or the SRO is the person that they go to. Why is that? What is it that the SRO is providing to that student that a social worker or a school counselor who should have been building those relationships since even before that student entered that, that building, that school as a student, right? At orientations, like this is where you're meeting these people. They should be in your life every day. It should be part of your experience. Sometimes counselors are the only consistent staff person a student has from the minute they enter middle school to the minute they leave. That person should be really important. And I think that the only reason, there begs a question of why? Why is it the SRO that they get sent to? Why is it the SRO that gets called? And the only thing I can think about is, for some reason, it's a judgment against the student, or it's a need for some sort of intimidating presence. And that makes me very, very nervous. So I think it's that delineation of roles and how we support our students and how we refer them, the question, it begs to be asked there.
Commissioner Harder, I see you there, but I did tell Dr. Vika I'd get back to her and then forgot to put her right in the slot behind Dr. Johnson. So I'll go, Dr. Vika, give you the, an opportunity first and then I'll come to you, Commissioner Harder.
That's fine. Please allow Commissioner Harder to speak first.
Sure.
Thanks. Yeah, just a brief comment. I mean, this is, again, I think it's related to the question of data and governance. You know, we've defined this job a certain way. And I can only begin to imagine how difficult this job is as we've defined it, whatever the problems are with the way it's been defined. And I just want to take a moment to acknowledge that and express my gratitude for, for our staff and for our SROs for, for doing this, what is undoubtedly difficult work. But, you know, when we see these numbers, I think to different degrees, I think we're all troubled by them for good reason. And then the question I'm left with again is, okay, so what does it mean? And I think we keep referring to P and G. To me, that's the right answer is how do we restructure this? And it's a, it seems to me it would be a very fraught question, but I think it's an important one for us
Dr. Vika?
So I, I know several of the officers, two, I had as students in class, and one, I'm very proud to say, ended up as an SRO in our district. And so when you ask, why would kids go to see an SRO? I have a pretty good reason. The one I know is an amazing guy. I have, for me, I guess I have a request. I, I'm a psychologist. And so in my world, everything can be measured and the national data are there. And so I, I wonder if, rather than simply doing a, a policy revision, we go back to some of the activity that we did in 2018, but extend. So in 2018, an important part of the revision were focus groups with community and family members and students. And we could employ focus groups again. But the data are there, the national data are there. So the extension I would love to see would be, would be, it'd be P and G members or a subcommittee to look very closely at the research data. We don't have to wait any longer for local data because the data are there. And then consider, not just in a revision, a revision, but also consider an alternative model. And in delineating roles, that alternative model would be, we do not have SROs in the schools. But we can conceptualize a different way for a relationship with Eau Claire Police in our schools. So I, if that's possible, I'd say just, you know, look at some radically different proposals that P and G would bring forward and then make a decision based on the national data.
Kim, I think you mentioned at the beginning of your presentation that you would be bringing to P and G data, at least from around the state and nation about what has been going on. Is that, did I understand that correctly?
Yes, I've started to gather some research and some data. I think, Dr. Vika, perhaps some of what you're referring to as far as the impact data. The DPI has posted some information on their website. So I have that and I'll be prepared to, to share that information with you as well. Marissa is going to work on doing a little bit of research around what's happening in districts, comparable districts across the state of Wisconsin as far as their relationships with SROs. And we hope to have that by Thursday as well.
Thank you. I will agree with you, Dr. Vika, that I think we do have the data. We can, and what data we need, we can find or use those focus groups to gather. And I think that looking at, not taking anything off the table right now, instead being creative with our adjustments is appropriate. So I will take that to P and G and carry that there as well. Are there additional comments at this time or questions? Seeing none, I'll thank you once again, Kim. Thank you, Deputy Chief Thomas. You know, I know that, that sometimes, you know, that's, the point is to try to get at this data and to, I don't want it lost, that we appreciate your being here and the work that your department is doing. We just, we know that it is not complete. And I think you would agree that that work is never complete for any of our organizations. So just want to express our thanks for joining us tonight. We'll now move on to our final agenda item of the evening, that is the health and dental insurance renewal rates. I think Abby is probably at least sharing, but I don't know, Abby, if you are presenting or if it's as listed in the, in the PDF, Ms. Lewison.
Yeah, Abby, I believe is sharing, and this is Tanya Lewison. I'm with USI Insurance Services.
Thank you for joining us.
Thank you for having us. I do have my colleague, Suzie Hoig, is also on the line with us. So just wanted to take a moment to introduce her. I have worked with the district for the past three years and presented to this group in the past. And Suzie has now joined our team so that she can assist going forward. So just wanted to make sure we made that introduction.
Hello, everyone. As Tanya said, I'm a consultant that will be working with Eau Claire. I have been with A D R C slash U S I for six years, worked with the carrier prior to that, and worked in HR in the school district prior to that. So kind of full circle of with the school district and HR. So I look forward to working with your team.
All right. With that, thank you, Suzie. And we're going to go ahead and take a look at your health insurance and dental renewal tonight. So if you want to go ahead, Abby, and flip to the next slide, that'd be great. So we know we have a few new board members. So I want to make sure that we kind of bring you a historical perspective and then bring you into where we are today. So for your historical perspective, we're looking at your renewal for last year, the 2020, 21 renewal. So that renewal calculated at a 15.2% increase. Through negotiations with your health carrier security health plan, that renewal increase was delivered at a 9.9 increase. So they did bring that down. At the time that your renewal was calculated, you had a medical loss ratio of 108%. So that 108% is a reflection of your claims coming in and your premium. So what they are looking at at that point is, security health plan is paying $1.08 in claims out the door, while you're paying a dollar in, in premium. So they're basically paying more out than they're taking in, in premium. The other piece that's not reflected in a loss ratio are pieces like the administrative expense. So for security to keep the doors open and make sure that they can have people there to answer the phones, process claims, things like that, their administrative expenses run at about 10%. So just wanted to point that out, that that is not included in your medical loss ratio. So now we will take a look at your 21, 22 renewal. So your plan renews on July 1st. Your renewal this year was calculated at 12.5%. We all know that with budgets being what they are and the year that we've all had, the last 12 months, that 12.5% was absolutely not feasible. So we worked to negotiate with security health plan to bring that renewal down. They did deliver an increase of 7%. So at the time that that calculation was made, your medical loss ratio had improved. So remember the year before, we were looking at 108%. We've now dropped to 101.3. So that is a positive thing, that you're going kind of in the right direction. So the things that we want to point out So the things that we want to point out here when they're calculating your increase, they are looking not only at those administrative expenses that we talked about, but they're also looking at medical trend. So medical trend is looking at, if you have an office visit today, they know how much it's going to cost, but medical expenses continue to go up. So if we're looking at something a year, year and a half from now, what is that same visit going to cost? So medical trend is right now at approximately 6%. So what you have today will be about 6% more, you know, further down the road. The other adjustment that is being made uniquely this year, not, has not been made in the past, is an adjustment for COVID. So we've all been living it, but the underwriters are a little bit concerned about delayed care. So if you have a member in your group that maybe was supposed to have a knee replacement, a hip replacement, some type of surgery, maybe they had cancer, and they delayed care for a period of time because of COVID, they are looking at what that extra cost might be. So did they do additional damage? Has the cancer spread further, those types of things? Because it can cause that cost to rise when they come back in and have those services treated at a later time. So that's being added on all carriers that Suzie and I work with. They're all adding some type of adjustment for COVID going forward, at least for the 2021 renewals. So tonight, we wanted to bring you three options to consider. We're going to try to carefully walk through each of the three so that you have a very good understanding. So the first option is Option A. So A is essentially looking at your current plan design. It's renewing the current plan, making no changes to the benefit plan. That is an estimated cost increase of the 1.6 million or the 7% that we described. So again, Option A is your renewal, no plan design or benefit changes to the plan, and the increase at 1.6. Option B would include a change to your current lab and x-ray benefit. So in order for you to understand that, we'll talk about where you are now. So currently labs and x-rays, if an individual goes in, any lab and x-ray that they have, no matter where the service is offered, is covered at 100% under your plan. If you would move to this selection, any of those services, labs and x-rays that are not done, and we'll talk about the clinic in a minute, but any services that are done would be subject to your deductible and your coinsurance. So they would have out-of-pocket expense on those services. Now you're going to see the notation here that says this is not a standard benefit. So security health plan did offer this on their plans up until about six years ago. So your plan was allowed to keep it, essentially in a grandfather-type capacity, so you could continue that benefit as long as you have it. It's not standardly offered and has not been so for about six years. Now, we were made aware of something this afternoon, so we want to bring this to you in full disclosure, so that you understand how this plan may impact employees. You do have the near-site clinic, so the employee clinic does provide free lab draws and x-ray services. So someone can go to the clinic, have their blood drawn for a lab, they can have their x-ray performed. There's another component to that. So when you have a lab drawn or you have an x-ray taken, someone has to process that lab, or they have to read the x-ray. So that portion of the expense is not included at the clinic. They are processed off-site at another location, so those particular items would be subject to the plan deductible and coinsurance. The estimated cost increase on this is 1.2 million, it's about 5.4%. When we offered this option, and we were talking about it initially, we were hoping that it would drive people to use the near-site clinic. So we want to get as much value out of that or return on your investment as possible. So we were hoping it would drive, you know, patients to use that near-site clinic. We're a little bit concerned because of that division where they have certain services covered, and now you have readings and processing happening, you know, somewhere else, and those are subject to deductible, that it may cause some confusion. So we just wanted to bring that to your attention. So Option B, again, keeps everything else in the plan the same, except for that lab and x-ray, now covered at 100%, and it would be subject to the deductible and the coinsurance. Option C. So Option C combines two things, takes your lab and x-ray service that we talked about in Option B, has it subject to deductible and to coinsurance, and it also increases the maximum out-of-pocket. So a maximum out-of-pocket is kind of that ceiling. So if you combine all your out-of-pocket expense, whether it be deductible, coinsurance, co-pays, all that money that you spend out of your pocket, and it creates kind of a ceiling for that member, knowing that when I hit that, my insurance company's going to start paying 100%. So right now, that maximum out-of-pocket or ceiling is at $6,000 for an individual and $12,000 for a family. Now, keep in mind that $12,000 would cover also an employee spouse or employee child. So anything other than single is going to have that $12,000, and that would move to $6,500 for single and $13,000 for family. Again, the employee clinic would continue to provide the free lab draws and the x-ray services, but this would have the same challenge in Option B, where those services would be split, some paid 100% and some would be applied to deductible. The estimated cost increase there is about 1.1 million. Okay, so for your reference, we wanted to give you the full premium. So this is a rate comparison showing your 2021 rates for single, employee plus spouse or plus child and family rates. And then we also displayed here Option A, which again is your renewal with no changes. Option B, changing the lab and x-ray benefit only. And Option C, which changes the lab and x-ray benefit, as well as increasing that maximum out-of-pocket. So a 7%, 5.4% and 4.8% respectively. So next, we wanted to share with you the impact to employees. So when we're looking at the employee contributions to these plans, we wanted to lay out what that difference looks like for an employee. So you'll see monthly employee contributions are displayed here with your current premium. We'll just use the family plan as an example. So current premium, your family plan, they're paying $266 a month. With your renewal, Option A, no changes, that would move from $266 to $284. With Option B, the lab and x-ray change, it changes that from your renewal about $4, so $280. And Option C, which makes two changes, the lab and x-ray, and the maximum out-of-pocket change, would move that to $279. So it gives you some perspective on the changes. So renewal, $284, drops it by about $4 for Option B and about $5 for Option C. At the bottom of the slide, you're going to see the annual district increase from current. So you know your current premium. Option A is going to increase that on the district's portion by about 1.45 million. Option B, 1.1 million, and Option C, just under 1 million. And that would be your increase from what you pay today. So to round out the picture for you this evening, we wanted to share with you the total cost per month and then per year. I think Abby's having challenges changing here. Think we need to, there we go. So your current total cost is at the top, so that's showing you your monthly, what you're paying today. So what you're paying currently is just over 2 million, and you'll see that carries across. And then we're doing projected total costs with the three options. You'll then see the difference. So what's the difference between your projected and your current? And then we broke out the bottom into the employee portion of the increase and the district portion. So again, the employee portion of the increase is overall, this would increase, Option A would increase the employee portion for all employees, you know, as a whole, about $17,000. The increase to the district is about $121,000. And then we carried that to the bottom to give you a per-year perspective. So again, the difference of 1.6 that we talked about earlier, the 1.2, 1.1, and then way at the bottom, correlating back to our district portion of the increase. So you have the 1.4 million, Option A, as the renewal, 1.1 for Option B with the lab and x-ray change, and just under 1 million for Option C, which has the lab x-ray change, as well as the out-of-pocket increase. So we have met with your holistic committee. I know that it's been valuable in the past to gain their perspective on things. They met this afternoon, and the decision that was arrived at is that Option A seemed to make the most sense. There was expressed confusion over B and C as far as that lab benefit goes, where those pieces are split, concerned about what kind of confusion that's going to cause with members, and, and kind of how much, how much you're going to get for that savings. So with the savings being just under $300,000 to move to Option B or $400,000, is it going to be, you know, worth all of the explanation? And we may not get the ultimate goal, which is to increase use at the near-site clinic. So your dental plan renewal for 21-22 is going to have no changes, so no increase on the dental premium for this coming year. And with that, I will open it up to any questions.
Thank you, Tanya. Thank you, Suzie. Questions or comments from board members? Commissioner Harder.
Thanks for this report. I just, I wanted to ask a quick question about, we, we had discussed at one point a self-insure option, and I, I just wanted to, if you could discuss that a little bit. I know in the past, it wasn't really optimal for our district because of our, our usage rate, but seeing as that's improved, and I think we're down, I think it was 101 something percent, would that bring us in a range where self-insurance would be more of a, something to consider?
It is actually something that Suzie and I have on our planning for strategic planning, speaking with your administrative team that we work with. We have discussed with them the exploration of self-funding, also the potential of marketing the plan in the future. So looking at options, at this point, you have one more, basically contract you're on the clinic. So we had a three-year agreement with that, and that is actually tied to your security health plan. So if you, if you move from security, you lose the clinic at the same time. So we wanted to make sure that we're looking long-range, not just for a short-term gain. So we do want to do education on self-funding, as well as some long-range strategic planning that'll put us in that better position to entertain self-funding and some other options going forward.
That's great. That makes sense. Thank you.
Well, I'd like someone to tell me if they can hear me right now.
I can hear you just fine.
That's lovely. My video has frozen, and I can't see if anybody else is waiting to talk.
I think Phil, Phil Lyons, are you waiting to ask a question? Okay.
I would like to ask a question, yes.
Certainly.
I guess, I was a little surprised that the year-over-year didn't go down more. And, and I guess I was surprised that it didn't go down more from 108% to 101% because, and you alluded to it a little bit, a lot of the elective procedures have been deferred. And so we may be looking at a backlog of medical expenses in, in the coming year that is sizable. And, you know, I guess I thought in this particular year that number would have dropped more. And so what's, what's, what's kind of rattling around in my head is just, maybe it's a rhetorical question, that it's, it's really not about the high use of, of our, our members, it's more about the increased costs from the medical provider. Is that, is that a fair kind of extrapolation of these numbers?
Well, one thing that I do want to point out, so we share with your administrative team how you are running, so they can basically see that chart from month to month. With many groups, and Suzie can chime in too, we actually saw those months drop. So you'd see drops in February, March, and April, where claims actually went down. I have one group that, you know, sank below 20,000, you know? So, so things bottomed out. With your group, that did not happen. So curiously enough, you had some high-cost claims going on, so it kept your loss ratio in the normal, if not higher than normal, range during that time period. So that's one of the things that has, you know, each group is a little bit different depending upon what you have going on. You happen to have some high-cost items. So when someone is in the middle of cancer treatment or things like that, those things didn't stop. While the rest of the world came to a screeching halt, a lot of those, you know, patients were still going in for chemotherapy or may still have been going in, you know, for those high-cost services. So right now, there is, you know, you've had some high-cost claims this year that have kind of been pushing that forward despite the fact that everybody else was staying home.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Abby, is this something that you would need us to act on at the March 15th meeting? Where, what's the timeline here?
Yes, if it's possible to act on March 15th, that would help us, at the district level, be able to finalize our open enrollment dates and things like that. It takes us some time to coordinate all of those pieces.
Okay. Then we'll put it on as a, I think, a short individual item, just because there's the three choices. Obviously, we have a fairly clear recommendation coming from the administration, but we'll just put it on it as an individual item for next time.
Okay. Thank you.
And we'll slot it in there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Suzie, for your time tonight.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
This time, I will request any, or I will ask for requests for agenda items. Dr. Johnson.
Yes, I would like to be provided an update on the status in terms of what the district is doing in terms of supportive efforts to move towards the adapted or voted upon four-day model for K-5. Specifically, I'm interested in continued efforts to ensure that our teachers have the support and programmatic efforts to ensure that this is successful. And I would like that report made publicly to, to the district at, at large.
Thank you. Additional requests for agenda items? Seeing none, I would hear a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Agenda setting 8:00 AM tomorrow, our next meeting, March 15th.
This program was brought to you by a cooperation between Newsworks and the Eau Claire Area School Board.